Hello and welcome to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is Monday, January 14th. The time is 7:30. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the best of circumstances.
Question? Will the clerk please take the roll?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilman McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Viele.
Here.
Four members present. Council Vice President DeCruz is absent.
Yes, Councilman DeCruz asked me to relay that this is part of a planned vacation for him, so sorry he couldn't make it for the agenda tonight. All right, very good. Our next item of business is the approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of December 10th, 2018, and the regular sessions of December 10th and 17th. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve line 4A and 4B.
Second. So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously as well. Item 6, licenses. 6A is a resolution granting a vicualling license to The Chop House Incorporated, doing business as Chop House Grill. Application by Russell Goyette. Is somebody here to represent The Chop House Grill?
It's supposed to be here.
Yeah, we'll give them some time, I suppose. 6B is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct a portion of the Ocean State Road Race on Sunday, October 27th, 2019, at 7:30 to Road Races and Events Incorporated of Warren, Rhode Island, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event and the amount specified by the finance director and approval by RIDOT, the town's transportation and traffic review committee. Application by Karen Zions. Please come forward.
Good evening.
Evening.
There I am again.
Yes. Just state your name for the record, just.
I'm Karen Zions. I'm the COO and co-owner of Road Races and Events. I live here in town.
And discuss your past experiences, what you hope for this time around.
So this will be our fifth year for this race. We run about two and a half miles of it in South Kingstown. It's a marathon, half marathon and 5K. And basically, we run down the whole length of Middlebridge. So it's just a short portion in South Kingstown. Most of it's in Narragansett and North Kingstown.
Very good. How would one go about registering, getting involved, helping?
So they can contact us through our website. It's www.runri.us, and they can send an email to info@roadraces.us. And road is spelled like Rhode Island. We're happy to take volunteers. We're happily looking for charitable groups that want to volunteer in exchange for a stipend, and we're always looking for runners.
Any other questions? All right, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 6B.
Second. So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Good luck. Anybody from Chop House come in in the past two minutes? All right. 6C is a resolution granting a vicualling and holiday sales licenses to Elite huevos, doing business as The Bluebird Cafe. This application is by Howard Retano. Is...
Good evening. I'm Martha Day, attorney for Mr. Retano, and unfortunately, he didn't feel well tonight, so regrets not being able to be here in person. But he's been employed at The Bluebird Cafe for the last 21 years and is very excited to be the new owner of the business. And so he doesn't plan to make any changes to the menu at this time. Hopefully, he will be expanding some hours to have an evening fair, which you can go over there on Friday nights now and get a dinner meal, as well as breakfast or lunch. And that's what his plans are at this time.
Glad he's not planning to change anything. Any questions? No. All right, very good. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 6C.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to...
Great.
6D is a resolution granting a vicualling license to Pipeline Restaurant, doing business as Caliente Mexican Grill on Fortin Road. Application by Franquin Rodesno? I mean, sorry. Just come up there and tell me how wrong I was.
Good evening. My name is Franquin Rodesno. I'm the president and the owner of Caliente Mexican Grill. I've been working there for a long time, and it used to be owned by Ben Woods, and I worked for him, and I ended up buying it from him. So that's how I'm there now, me and my brother. And that's what we do, operate, serve food, Mexican, doing a more like, trying to do more, a little more authentic Mexican food, trying to make everybody happy with the tacos and burritos and this guy.
It's good to see you up here.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm an avid fan. I come in a lot, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
So no changes really in the business?
No, everything is still the same, same corporation, same name.
Same hours?
Same hours, yes.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Well, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 6D.
Second.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Congratulations. 6E is a resolution granting vicualling and holiday sales licenses to Four Seasons Food Mart. This is also on Fortin Road. Mohammed Zubair?
Good evening. My name is Mohammed Zubair. There's already an existing convenience store, so I'm just taking over. Everything is the same, pretty much.
Very good. This is the big one on the corner.
Yes, yes.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Motion to pass item 6E.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
All right, that brings us to our public hearing tonight. Let's hope that somebody from Chop House Grill has shown up at this point, perhaps? No. All right, well...
They were notified on December 13th of their anticipated attendance tonight.
Well, we can wait till the end of the meeting and then continue if need be.
If they don't show up, we can always continue.
All right.
They were present at the work session and they walked out. Both the two named the president and the vice president. I don't know if they were under the impression that we were already starting the meeting at that time, but they were here. I know those two well, and they walked out.
Well, their letter said 7:30 PM, so...
Do you have their numbers?
Yeah, why don't you move on?
Yeah.
I'll see you later.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, communications. 8A is a communication dated December 4th, 2018, from Richard Jurzak, withdrawing his resignation from the zoning board of review, which was, to be effective, December 31st of last year. It's been accepted. What are we going to do with it?
Make a motion to accept the communication from Richard Jurzak and thank him for reconsideration.
Second.
Great, any discussion on this?
No.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Item 8B is a communication dated December 11th, 2018, from Betty J. Cotter, submitting her resignation from the library board of trustees. It's been received, placed on file, and now what are we going to do with it?
So I'd make a motion that we accept Betty J. Cotter's resignation from the library board.
Second.
Perhaps add a letter of...
Send a thanks.
Absolutely.
All right, the motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Communication dated January 3rd, 2019, from Stephanie Kanter, submitting her resignation from South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention. That's been received and placed on file, and what are we going to do with that?
Make a motion that we accept Stephanie Kanter's resignation from the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention and thank her for her service.
Second. All right, so moved. Any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. We have communications dated January 7th from Tara Schold and January 9th, 2019, from Linda Soderberg concerning my recent social media post regarding allegations against a town council member. This has been received, placed on file. What should we do with it?
Can we comment at this time on this line item?
We can comment. I think typically with items like this, we'd just motion to put it on file. We can have a session after the motion is made.
Motion to put it on file?
Second. All right, discussion.
I'd like to make it known that I do support President Abel Collins. I did see the Facebook post, and although I don't totally agree with the platform in which he used, I support him 100%. He does represent us as the council, as the president. He was addressing issues that are of great public interest, something that we can't take lightly, something that we can't just not address. So I am behind Abel Collins 100%, and I do support the fact that he has come out and addressed the situation, and I would just like that to be known to the public. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
I have a couple comments. I think I want to address the process. So as a fellow counselor, I think that there should have been some collaboration, whether it be through, should be through a meeting, so that other counselors were aware before something like this was put on Facebook. I don't want to talk about the innocence or guilt. I don't have, obviously, I haven't seen a post, so it's been two weeks since that Facebook post went up, and I just think that there should have been more communication with the council before that action was taken to vet that through social media. Again, I don't want to get into the innocence or guilt, but I think the whole process, in my opinion, should have been handled differently in that the council should have been informed of what you had intended to do before it went out there. Thanks.
So I have a written statement I wrote about this because I did not want anything I'm going to say to be off the cuff or misconstrued. I thought a lot about what has happened in the past couple of weeks, and I'd just like to read my opinion on the matter at hand. So what is before us on this agenda tonight is the question of the appropriateness of the town council president's use of social media to advance an accusation into another council member's behavior. My comments tonight do not reflect my personal opinions on the charges levied against Councilman DeCruz. That is not what I am addressing here. I am addressing President Collins' use of social media in a manner that reflects upon the entire council without our input. The charges against another council person by President Collins were not brought on Mr. Collins' personal page. The announcement that the allegations had been made and that the town manager was accepting any other information was put forth on his self-promoted councilman's page. We know from recent rulings in federal court stemming from President Trump's use of Twitter that the court deems a social media account a "digital town hall," subject to the rights and responsibilities that a public forum should embody. If what is contained on President Collins' Facebook page is going to be presented as the policy of the town council and the town administration, the full council should have been included in the decisions contained therein, I in no way condone the use of social media to try any case. I did not condone it or agree with the issue when a former council person was being shamed for financial troubles or when a current school committee member is being tried and convicted of ethics violations on that platform. When did due process become disposable? Mr. Collins' use of the word credible in his public post regarding Mr. DeCruz's behavior is very troubling. Mr. Collins then calls on the public to send any information regarding the matter to the town manager. I find the use of the word credible incredible due to the conclusive nature. Councilman Collins, by using the word, has convicted Councilman DeCruz without due process. By what standard were these charges deemed credible? The file had just been opened. All of the accusations at this point were charged via social media. We are a country of laws, steeped in due process. When the need for an inquiry into the conduct of a member of a public body becomes apparent, I would hope that the subject of the accusations is given as much confidentiality as the accuser until the inquiry has been concluded. If and when that inquiry finds culpability, then and only then should a public official express their opinions on guilt or innocence. We, as South Kingstown elected officials, need to establish the protocol for when and why inquiries into a town councillor's behavior are warranted. We need to standardize what sanctions will be available for the body to impose. We currently default to Robert's Rules of Order. If Robert's Rules of Order sanctioned the president of a public body speaking on behalf of other members of the body without deliberation, then I have a serious problem with deferring to that protocol. Let the inquiry into the allegations against the elected official's involvement take place by an impartial third party. Let the chips fall where they may at the conclusion of that inquiry. I do not want to be included in the social media firestorm that the president's comments have initiated. My opinion was not solicited before or after the action was taken. Going forward, I would hope that all elected officials will be held to a standard of reserving judgment until the facts have been discerned. We should be vetting those facts in complete confidence to ensure due process for the employee and the accused. Let's keep the trial off of Facebook.
Thank you. For my part, clearly, Facebook is not an ideal location to discuss any number of items, and yet that's the world we live in at this point. The allegations against Councilman DeCruz had been well circulated by the time I felt the need to make any comment, and I'm sorry I came to that. We do have, unfortunately, very few rules around this situation, governing it, and I think that's something we need to address, certainly. I know that we may have been working on some ordinance language to update, you know, our sexual harassment policies at the town level concerning board members and the like, so I look forward to addressing this in a more holistic and thoughtful way at that point. I do not regret the post at all. I think it needed to be said, and unfortunately, I encouraged Bryant himself to make a statement, and I still believe that he will probably address this issue himself, and I'll leave it to him to address that. I don't think anything in my post indicated that I've presumed him innocent or guilty. I'm committing myself to a process that, and the town to a process, that will be transparent and fair. I think we owe that to him, and I think everybody has afforded that. Yeah, I'll reserve further comments to when we have the opportunity to address it in a way that addresses the core problems here. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Did you have a vote, Deb?
I'm an aye.
Okay. That motion carries unanimously.
Chris Byrne of The Chop House did just walk back in. If we want to move back to that.
All right, let's take them, 6A first. This is a resolution granting a vicualling license to The Chop House Incorporated, doing business as The Chop House Grill. Application by Russell Goyette.
Russell Goyette and Martin Garcia.
There's only one name on the application, but anybody who's here for Chop House can come forward, please.
How are you doing? I believe this is my first time doing this, so I really don't know what I'm actually supposed to be doing.
Well, tell us a little bit about what's happened at The Chop House Grill.
So for the past two years, I've actually been the executive chef and kind of like a silent partner with Chris Byrne, and we just decided the ultimate goal, sorry.
His name?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just...
Martin Garcia.
Thank you.
So right now, I am the executive chef and now owner. The ultimate goal was to purchase the property from Joe Frank and Fred DiCaprio, which is now actually something that we just accomplished. But now I bought the business from Charlie and Chris, and myself and Russell, we just started a new entity, which is Chop House Inc., and we're transferring the license from Tops to Chop House Inc.
All right. Any questions?
I would just like to say, I see Chris in the crowd, and Martin and Chris, I think you guys do a great job. You know, you employ a lot of people. You bring in a lot of tourists. You bring in a lot of new people to town, and as you know, I'm an avid fan. You see me in there a lot. And just like to say, keep up the good work.
Appreciate it.
Anyone in the crowd here who hasn't tried yet, I strongly recommend going to The Chop House.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 6A.
Second. Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Please stay at the podium there, and I'll open the public hearing relative to an application for transfer of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956. This would be a transfer of a Class B vicualler liquor license from Tops Incorporated, doing business as Chop House Grill, by Christopher Byrne, president to The Chop House Incorporated, doing business as Chop House Grill, Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, by Russell Goyette, vice president for the dining rooms and bar areas, and as further defined in a site plan on file in the town clerk's office. Said license is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, filing of a certificate of insurance evidencing required liability coverage, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and the satisfaction of all claims.
We have two communications, one dated January 7th, 2018. In accordance with Rhode Island General Laws 3519, we request that you not allow the transfer of the liquor license of Tops Inc., 191, Old Tower Hill Road, Wakefield. We were owed $10,567.24 based on invoices dated May through August 2016. To date, we have received payments of $4,817.3, leaving a balance due of $5,750.20, not including any interest. We respectfully request that this debt be cleared before a transfer of license takes place. Please contact me if you require additional information or documentation. Thank you in advance for your time and assistance. Sincerely, Gary Lazard, Vice President. Another communication dated January 4th, 2019. Ray Tops, Dear Dale, this establishment owns Perkins Paper Inc., $26,161.30. I would like to object to the transfer of this liquor license until this debt is paid off. Let me know if you need anything else from my office. The license is held in the name of the corporation and is up for hearing on January 14th. Sincerely, Matthew Idings. That's it.
Thank you. Anything that... No, I mean, that was expected, but yeah, we'll take care of that. Any questions for the applicant? All right, good. So at this point, we have to open it up for comments from the public, so step aside. Anybody who wishes to speak on this matter from the public is welcome to come up and just state your name for the record. All right. Very good. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to...
Sorry. That's all right.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And do I hear a motion on 7A?
Motion to approve line 7A.
Could you add in the contingencies, please?
Motion to approve line 7A, and I'll just read this. Said license is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, filing of a certificate of insurance evidencing required liability coverage, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and the satisfaction of all claims.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Have a good night.
All right. That brings us to comments from interested citizens. Please step up to the podium, speak into the microphone. Yeah, you can leave at any time if you're, don't worry about...
I wanted to speak to, am I okay? Okay. To the letters and the Facebook post, and I agree, I think that this is really uncharted territory. I understand the hesitation that some of you and some of the community feel about exposing Bryant's transgressions, but more importantly, I think we need to focus on protecting the women of our community, and we need to focus on changing the way that women are often dismissed, and that often the people who are accused are victimized, when really, you know, it's the women who are the victims here. I think Abel's post was a call for women to come forward. He went out on a limb to give women in this town an opportunity to safely come forward, and I'm grateful for that. In terms of process, I too, as a citizen, would like to know more about the investigation. I hope at some point, when it's appropriate, you will let the community know the results of the investigation and how it's been conducted, and I feel that the public has a right to know. So thank you, Abel. So, thank you, Abel.
Ellen Lieberman, 115 Robinson Street. I wrote you all a letter in support of Abel's call for people to come forward if they were harmed by this alleged behavior. I think some of the people in the council have raised some excellent points about how we should move forward in these situations, and the need for the council to speak together as one voice. I think they're definitely legitimate points to be raised. But I also did not read anything nefarious in Abel's post. I thought he was simply putting it out there for anybody who wanted to come forward and participate. I don't know what the town would have done, perhaps, you know, take out a legal ad letting people know. I don't, I don't know what would be the proper way to do that. But I'm glad the town is taking these allegations seriously, and I'm sure that with the wise counsel of all the council members, that you will come to a good resolution, and I thank you all for taking these things seriously because it's a serious matter. Thank you.
This past summer, and I know you're not voting on it tonight, but I want to speak to the facility plan and the school budget in general. But the past summer, the town and the district are making steady progress on that facility plan. In the minutes of the August 2nd building committee meeting, there was some language that there was a guarantee of 55, it actually says a guaranteed 55% reimbursement from the state, along with a potential for another 15% on top of that. Optimistic for sure, but at that moment, we were looking at $23.4 million in local funding need for this project. That was the, that's where we started. Since then, a few things have changed. We've obviously changed the scope of the work. We've changed the consolidation plan at the elementary level. That eliminated a 25-year operational savings in excess of $30 million. It eliminated the possibility of a property that could be used that's now dormant for the majority of evenings in the year, every weekend, every holiday, and the entire summer. Now, the thing that I'm looking at, what we've seen today, we learned this last Thursday, is that the reimbursement coming in from the state is not the potential 70%. It's not even the 55% that was guaranteed. The best that we can hope for at this point is 52.5%, and I think I've seen some recommendations by the town manager to say it should be, we should be planning on no more than 50%. That means local funding, from the moment in August when we were looking at 23.5 million, has moved to nearly 37 or 38 million, assuming the project doesn't expand in scope. We, you're obviously not, and I, and I do applaud you for pushing back this decision to submit a Stage 2 application, but there is very little information to go on at this point. We, we don't have board minutes from the building committee going back almost three months to October 23rd. We don't, we haven't seen a Stage 2 application. I have not been able to even access the Stage 1 application since my email address as a school committee member was discontinued, and even the presentation and supporting documentation that came along with Thursday night's presentation has not been made public. I haven't seen it through the normal channels. This is really the type of thing that when I was serving as chair, I was literally crucified for, not literally, metaphorically literally. That's the kind of transparency that is the exact opposite of what we had hoped for, and I want to just call attention to it. And I hope, as you look at this facility discussion, whenever you're, you're looking at this Stage 2 application, there's significant amounts of money here, and there's a significant budget issue that can happen before we have to make this ultimate decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Just for everybody here who might not have been at the work session, we've been in communication with RGB. I'm sure a number of you have come here for the school issue tonight. RGB has told us that they want to meet, discuss the Stage 2 application. We're going to be doing that on the 29th, so I'm pretty confident that I can say we won't be voting on that last agenda on, on the last agenda item. If you want to talk to that agenda item, please come forward during this comments from interested citizens and make your comments at that point. So, that's, that's where we stand there. I should also say that RGB has said that postponing the vote until the 29th, 30th is okay. We can still meet that February 15th deadline.
Doyle Beasley. So, you know, for this past year and all these discussions we've had, in the last couple of months, the building committee meetings, school committee meetings, town council meetings, we got a big group of people that want to keep taxes down, and we have other people that want to keep school buildings open we don't need. We got a lot of people talking, but you know, here's what I don't hear. I don't hear anybody talking about what our students need. There's nobody, there's no represent, there's nobody representing the students in this, in this discussion. Maybe on the phone, onto me. So, the, the school funding formula that we all complain about in South Kingstown because of how much money we've lost. So, I did, I did a big analysis of it. I talked to Ryan, I got some information, some suggestions, and I did a big spreadsheet analysis of it. It's here, I sent it to you guys today, you'll probably look at it, but it's all right. All right, because here's what I couldn't, so I did the spreadsheet analysis, you know, and I'm looking at it. So, I was always under the impression that the school funding formula, the reason why you have a formula is that more monies go to the districts that need it, you know, the poor districts that have more kids to get the subsidized lunches in Providence and places like that. So, the monies from the, from the rich areas, the richer areas, some of that would go to help those, those children. But what I found out is, that's not how this funding formula works. So, the analysis I did was from 2008 till today. So, in 2008, that's when we had, that was the year we had a, we had a big year. We got 10.5 million from Ryan, and that was, I think that's the most we ever got. But in 2012, we started the, the school funding formula that we're on now, and I think we got at least two more years in this 10-year block, but South Kingstown's share is going steadily downward into the 5 million area now, below, below 6, into the 5s. But when I looked at Barrington, I'm looking at Barrington, and I just updated the day with the 2019 funding formula stuff off the, off the Ryan website. So, it says 20, from 2012 to 2020, or 2019, Barrington's, Barrington is at 150% increase. So, the richest town in, in the state, I'm sorry, second, East Quinage, I think is number one, but the second richest town in the state has received the biggest increase in money coming from Ryan for schools. And they went from 2.6 million this year, they're at 5.9, almost $6 million, 150% now. East Quinage. East Quinage went from 2 million, they're up to like over 3 now. It's the second highest percentage increase. Around the South Kingstown, so we went, we dropped half, half already. How is this possible? How did the richest towns in Rhode Island get all this new money and we get less? Well, come to find out after talking to Ryan, there's three, there are a lot of variables in this, but there are three that are most important. Number one is reduced lunch. Number two is the school population, and the third one is cost per student. Now, when you look at the spreadsheet, what you see is there are, so Barrington and East Quinage, both, in the last 10 years, their school district populations are pretty much leveled out. They, Barrington's left a few, a few students, maybe 150, so they still have around 3,400 students. East Quinage's school population has actually increased in the last, since the 2012 started this school funding formula. And of course, we've dropped like a rock now, so. But interestingly, I don't, you guys don't have it, but on the line, on the lines with the yellow, those are, those are the ones that you should look at for sure, but because what it shows is, there are a couple examples there where the school population in those towns also dropped, but they had significant increases in Ryan reimbursement. And it all came down to this. It was cost per student. Cost per student drives this entire sheet right here. How much though? Those are going to make you cry. So, we spent last year 19.7, $19,700 a student. Barrington spent $14,835. More than $5,000 a student, a cost per student here in South Kingstown to educate them. That's why Barrington's share from Ryan increased, and ours went down the toilet. Now, we also had a 30% drop in our school population, but here's why, when you look at the sheet and you see those other school districts where their population went down, they continued to get almost the same level of funding they had before. So, if our cost per student was anywhere near in the ballpark of Barrington, then we wouldn't have gone from 10 million to 5. We'd still be around the 10 million level. And if our, and if our student body hadn't dropped out of sight, we could, we could have like $20 million a year. We'd be at least, we'd be over 15 for sure. So, so here's the deal, right? What are we going to do about getting our, our cost per student down? There's only one way to do it. That money is in excess employees. Now, then I did a, now this...
Mr. Beasley?
Yeah?
Can you wrap it up, just to let other people have an opportunity to speak?
Yeah, sure. Okay. So, Barrington this year has 30, 3,600 and... 3362 students and 396 employees. We have 3,069 and 485 employees. So, we have one employee for every six students. They have one employee for every eight and a half students. We have, we have nine and a half kids per teacher. They have 11.8 children per teacher. If we took our, if we took our school population and dropped it over into Barrington using their percentage, percentage factor, then 396 would drop to 352. That means we have like 100, over 130 people. If we had Barrington's ratios, we'd have 350 people in this district, not 485. There's no way you can justify that differential. You can't justify it by the test scores. You can't justify it by anything that I can possibly think of. Now, I've already heard, you know, I went to the budget hearing for the superintendent, and there's the one that had five teachers. Is this a joke? I mean, seriously? Okay, so, I'm going to wrap it up, but here's the deal, right? This has gone on for decades in this town. This is how it works. People somewhat have somehow affiliated with the unions in this state. They get elected to the town council and the school committee, and they make sure that every time votes come up that have to do with employment, that they keep people employed. We've turned South Kingstown into the WPA for employment, for employment, and that's why we can't afford to fix our schools the right way, because we're overpaying for, for staff.
Hi, I'm Brooke Conley. I was just, I'm just here, I haven't prepared anything, but I just wanted to thank Abel Collins for his post. You guys can debate amongst yourselves, you know, how, you know, you guys should have all handled it, but I'm glad that somebody said something and, you know, spoke out in support of, of the women who are the actual victims, you know, alleged victims in this case. So, thank you, and I hope you all continue to take this seriously and let the town know the process and what's going on. Thank you.
I wanted to, I know we're back and forth here, I just wanted to talk about the schools' facility study for a minute, and why I think it's very smart to delay any vote, any action on this. So, I can't talk about what's going on in the classrooms. All I can talk about is what I think I know about finance and debt ratios, but questions that the council and the school committee need to really pin RGB down to answering. What effect will, whether it's $75 million or a $60 million bond, what effect will this have on our AA2 Moody's rating? And number two, will the state provide enough backstop when we read the prospectus on the bond offering that will help us maintain our AA2 rating as well as, especially those towns and cities in the state which financially are not as strong as we are? I think we have to remember that 52.5% is our best-case scenario. The other question, can we stretch out the 1% to 3% maintenance of effort? 3% is that going to be of our operating budget from the town? 52, 54 million? Or the total 61, 62? You don't have to answer it now. The point is, at 3% of 60-some-odd million with the state, that's $1.8 million. You're basically, that's our school budget. Forget about operating salaries, healthcare, anything else. That's a huge number. I don't know if we build up from 1% to 3 over five years, three years, 10 years, but these are serious questions that we need to work with the state and the General Assembly The 8% contingency, is that going to be part of and in a $75 million bond? And will that contingency, like the excess in the bond, be like a credit card? Will we get crazy and start spending money? We need to have absolute curtains drawn. This is serious stuff, folks, because you know what happens every time the state gets, you know, some extra money, it is gone. you know, some extra money, it is gone. Structural deficits, always. No one has ever asked what new construction costs, like the high school, the middle of the high school. What are the new construction costs versus remodel and additions? I'm in real estate. I've got houses where it's twice as costly for additions and remodeling to existing home than building something new. I've never seen this discussed. What would the high school cost as new? Could we get 70% to really show Ride that we're paying attention and we understand the error of our ways? You know, no one's asked these questions. And we should ask these questions because the governor's charge was newer and fewer. So, we're kind of remodeling and additions. You know, I'm very confused here, who's gonna wind up as a winner when everybody's, every town and city's dollar amount requests are looked at? Has anyone done, I haven't seen it, has anyone done an appraisal of the value of the high school? Or Curtis Corner, for a developer? Senior Housing? I haven't seen any of this. What are these guys doing? This is what it's all about. Are we gonna do something that have it sit there for five years and depreciate like the Superman building? I hope not. This should be something that's part of their package right now. And you know, you wanna talk about confusing, I think I know something about numbers, but the last three meetings I've been here in the auditorium, I've gone from Broad Rock, 8 million, 15 million, 18 million with adjustments, back to 15 and a half million. Yikes! If I'm an average person out there, we don't have a clue. Not a clue. And, um, I've gotta give Dol Bießle a lot of credit here, because he's right on the money with the numbers. And I know numbers don't tell us all about kids in classrooms. But I have been telling this council and previous councils, and even ones I sat on. Bob Hicks, 2009, said, "That's the last year Curtis Corner will be open, because we can't afford it." Tony Mager, chairman of the school committee, 2012, "We're overfacilitated, it's killing programs." I have been on this for eight, nine years, and you not wanna know the cost? Ten, we're facilitated, $30 million plus that our taxpayers have given to other cities and towns in this state. And you need to let the citizens of this town know, not through Facebook, but what the true numbers are, because numbers do not lie. Thank you very much.
I'm Stephen Ligt, South Kingston resident. I have two comments about, with all due respect to Mr. Beasley, I appreciate his engagement in this process, but I would caution anyone against hearing a number at the podium and taking it to the bank without doing their own research, about whether that's true or not, and whether the numbers stand up. So, please, don't, don't take anything at face value, and I encourage people to, listening here at home and behind me, not to, to take those numbers and put them in their pocket and, and believe them without checking them themselves. The other thing I would say is that, and I, we've, this discussion's come up in school committee meetings as well, is that when we talk about comparing different school districts, I don't think it takes a whole lot of imagination to understand that, that while the educational outcomes and student needs are, and when I say student needs, what students can get at home versus what they need to get out of the schools in order to bring them up, to, to fully educate them, closely tracks with parental educational attainment, with parental, with household income, and as a proxy, the free and reduced lunch percentage. So, when you do see people comparing directly to individual other school districts, I would encourage you to make sure that you're aware of those numbers, that you understand that if you compare South Kingston to a school district that has 50% higher household income and 50% lower free and reduced lunch, for instance, that you can't directly compare those test scores and say, "Well, we should be getting the same test scores for the same amount of money spent per child." Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Maggie Kane, I live in East Mattoonik. So, I just wanted to take a couple minutes to thank Councilman Collins for making the issue with Mr. De Cruz public on Facebook. I've written a couple different things, but nothing is really coming together, but I just would like to address the council and say that I understand that this is new territory, and that we all have to kind of figure out how to deal with this, especially if it has been, I don't know if it's been established or not, if there's been any laws broken. Obviously, that would maybe become public if what the town has found is, you know, made public as well. But please be aware of your language. Coming forward is not anything that anyone would really relish, or, you know, put their private lives under the microscope. What Abel did is what allies do. They put themselves in the crossfire to use their privilege or what they have as a way to get it out into the public. That's what allies do. Unfortunately, he might have upset, you know, some of the members of the council, and I understand that, and I'm sure there are gonna be many discussions about how you deal with issues like this in the future. But, the language that you use is very important, because before, women were not encouraged to come forward. You know, so to interact in the public or political sphere of the town, city, or even the nation, the burden is, it falls on women, you know, to go about and, you know, just brush it under the rug and disregard their own feelings about the situation. Where now, we don't have to do that anymore, right? We don't know, maybe we don't have the tools to properly come forward to make everyone feel comfortable, especially the person that is the one who supposedly, you know, doing the things that are out of line, or, you know, poor judgment, harassment, whatever label you wanna put on it, right? Members of the town are uncomfortable by this. Unfortunately, that's what happens, is that when someone practices poor judgment, people are made uncomfortable, especially the women that, that practice was put towards. So, I just wanna make the council aware of that. I appreciate the fact that you guys are very thoughtful about this process, and that you've been very vocal about that, and I think conversation is, and openness, that's the thing, is that the openness of it is what is gonna bring, you know, what do they say, light is the best disinfectant, right? So, I appreciate your time, and I really appreciate Abel Collins making this public and putting it on Facebook. Thank you.
Hold on, Mr. Beasley. Anybody else wanna speak? Okay, we have other people who wanna speak.
Sure. Just, my name is John D. Checo, I'm a resident of Wakefield, Teft Hill. I'm a professor of engineering over at URI, I work for the Naval Undersea Warfare Center as a senior scientist. Tried as best I could to find any information about any ordinance in South Kingston that dealt specifically with the public or neighbors needing to be made aware that people would be raising honeybees. I understand this is a big switch from where you guys were five minutes ago. So, we're gonna talk about honeybees for just a minute, and then I'm gonna go, and you guys can get back to fighting out all the things that, the really important stuff. But, the problem here is that I have a neighbor who we have a history with, who has decided to put several hives of honeybees right at the edge of her property, 25 feet from where my kids play, and then likes to stir them up when the kids are out there playing. And I've tried as best I can to find any kind of ordinance that would protect us from those types of things, but there isn't one. So, I don't know what the exact vector here is to introduce, or at least to get some sort of thoughtful consideration for a reasonable ordinance that would allow a homeowner to say, "Hey, look, we have someone in our home who is allergic to bee stings, and it would be really great if they weren't playing in their yard with a swarm of 40,000 bees." So, I don't know if this is the right time to inject this. If you want me to send you an email, something a little bit more formalized, I brought just a, a brief copy of what some other towns have done, you know, from a top-down sort of thing, and obviously, no other town is South Kingston. No other town is going to be an exact match that say, "Yes, we can just adopt all of these things, and they all make sense." But some of them, I think, do. So, that's what I have, and I'm really sure.
Well, if you wanna present the sort of list of action items-
Yeah, so this is, these are, this is just from the, the, from the, from Wisconsin. Who wanted to raise honeybees on their property would have to let their neighbors know, or at least say, "Hey, by the way, I plan on putting honeybees up on my property." They'd have to have a certain setback distance, that they couldn't be right up against the property. If there was somebody in a neighboring or an adjacent property that had a, an allergy, they could present a medical document from their doctor that says, "Yes, this person has a, a potential anaphylactic condition resulting from a bee sting," and that there would be an avenue for that family to be able to say, "Hey, look, it's not reasonable for you to raise bees next to my child who is going to die." That, I mean, I think that, I think we can all get to that point, and, but, but right now, there isn't a vector for that.
Mr. President, we'd be happy to accept the, the proposal. I would suggest, just as a matter of, of fact, that not always is the local government the best place to seek redress.
Understood.
There's plenty of civil law that deals with these sorts of situations.
And there isn't really even much at the state level, because I started all the way at the state, and believe me, I've gone through the DEM, and I've worked my way down from there, and they, essentially, we've all gotten to the same point. At one point, somebody pointed me to the animal control officer, somebody else pointed me to the police to file a harassment nuisance violation. I mean, I, I don't necessarily think that's the, the right and proper channel either. So, I, we're somewhat unique here in South Kingston, in that we have huge, wide-open farms, and then houses right on top of each other. So, there isn't really a one-size-fits-all to our town. If somebody has five acres of land, they can put as many honeybee, hives up as they want, but if somebody's on a quarter-acre lot and they're five feet away from their neighbor, there has to be some way to balance out how that works.
Again, Mr. President, we'd be happy to look into it. I would again, though, suggest that you look at other avenues, just because the local government may not be the right place to resolve this issue. Simple nuisance, simple trespass, there may be an attorney out there who can help you-
Sure.
-far beyond our ability to do so.
Sure. Anyway, thanks.
I believe you are now free to come up again.
So, how did all this Facebook start? I, I heard it was Sarah Markey started this or something, I don't know. How'd you find out about it? Just curious.
I saw it on Facebook.
Okay. Well, Sarah Markey, everybody, you may not know this, you know, Blind De Cruz went on John De Pietro's radio show, and when he was worried about her conflicts of interest being on the school committee, which I am certainly myself also, I don't see how she can vote on almost anything, because unless, anything you vote on in the school committee has, in some way, shape, or form, has to do with employment. But having said that, you know, we've had a history in this, in this room right here of shenanigans. And they're right, Jim. Jim, wake up, Jim. Okay. Of shenanigans going on in, in this chamber. A friend of mine was on the council a bunch of years ago. She used to have people come and sit in the front row, make faces at her, take pictures of her. So, but this one, this one's, this one set a new low for me, I have to say. And I don't know whether you talked to Mr. De Cruz prior to sending that out on New Year's Day, but I thought it was, to me, it was, how about I put it? It was kind of bullying in a way, it was also, I thought, very cowardly. Even the, and of course, these, like you, you said, when you talked about it today, this evening, it was alleged, and people, not quite as specific, that are called to the microphone, these are alleged, alleged. But even if they're true, which would make them not, you know, obviously, not good, even if they were true, to, to, I hate to use this, this phrase, to out the person, you know, a fellow council member on Facebook, is, to me, is just disgusting. Now, maybe you thought that was the only, the only form of, of media that you could send it out on, but I think, I think it's just awful, you know? There are 17 towns and cities in towns in Rhode Island have recall procedures. Recall procedures are followed if people that are voted into office, you know, violates certain things, code of conduct, or whatever, can be ruled from office. But South Kingston's not one of them. We don't have those, we don't have those in our, in our charter. Maybe that's just a discussion we, as, as a community, should have between now and the November election, to see whether or not that type of language should be entered into our charter as, as well. In, in 1947, the entire school budget for South Kingston was 145,000 dollars. And that year, they asked the town council for some money to put into the budget so they could start plans on a new high school. So, they put 6,000 dollars in there, and they started working on it. 1991, the first portion of the building was started, and by 1955, the whole building was opened. Now, the total cost of that building was 1.1 million, 550,000. And it wasn't without a lot of heartburn in town. In fact, two of the votes to whether to authorize monies to build that high school went into the negative. There were a bunch of people in town that didn't like spending a lot of money. At that time, the high school was in the hazard building, but they knew, even though there was a little bit of room left in that building, they knew it wasn't before long it was gonna, it was, was gonna need to be, have something new there. And, the town was only 10,000 people, but when they finally authorized the money to build the building, and increased the, and increased the tax rate from a dollar 62 to 246, 74 cent increase, which is 45% now. In 1950, in 1952, the average wage in the United States is a dollar fifty an hour.
Mr.-
Okay, okay. Thirty-one hundred dollars is the average salary for a year, and the average home in South Kingston, or in Rhode Island, was 11,000 dollars. But those people, at that time, of the existence of this town, made, made the choice. They could've said, "The heck with it, you know, let's just kick this can down the road, let, let people down later on, take care of this, you know, to get in this school. We'll just kick the can down the road and let somebody else worry about it," but they didn't do that. And we can't do that today. We need to spend the money to fix our schools. And the last thing I had to say would be to Mr. McInney, you, I don't really know you, but you seem like a nice person, a young man, and you may have a long future as a legislature, legislator, and I don't know where your, where your goals are, but I'd be, I just would give you one piece of advice, not to be so quick to hook your wagon up to horses, which may turn out later to be lame.
Hi, good evening, I'm Deb Burgner. I wasn't gonna speak, but then something that you said prompted me to come up here. So- So, Councilman Collins, you said that you noticed a Facebook post from Sarah Markie and that prompted you to make a post, but that post from Sarah Markie didn't reference a town employee. So, I'm considered confused on how you made that leap from some accusations that Sarah had put out there to a town employee, so.
Yeah, this is, this is not really appropriate.
Okay, that's fine. I'll, then I'll just ask the questions. I'll put them out there. And so, I'm just kind of confused on that, because there was no mention of a town employee. So, and then I was confused on what your role as a town council person would be in that, because when your post came out, you referenced the town employee. I would assume that the employee would, would go to their supervisor and file a complaint with Human Resources, or I don't think affirmative action is an office you have, with the files, some Title IX procedures. So, I'm confused how an employee supervisor would not go to their supervisor. So, did you consult the town employee before you made your Facebook post? Because in my work with survivors for the last 25 years, you often consult with the person to give them the most control about the situation. So, I'm confused if you consulted with the town employee beforehand. And it's really disturbing to me that you call the allegations credible, because we don't know if you did any sort of investigation. And again, that's not your role here. So, I, I do support women, men, children who report sexual assault, sexual harassment, and I fully support that, but however, I feel that you've walked down a slippery slope posting on social media and taking yourself into the role of arbitrator of this situation when perhaps it is a Human Resources situation. I'm also pointing out that I was wondering if you consulted with the town, town manager or the town attorney before you took this on as well. I mean, it's confusing on all of the tactics that you've taken. While I support women who make credible allegations, I support all women who, who feel that they are victims. I feel in this situation, we've gone into a very tenuous situation and, and I feel that the elephant in the room is some political theater that's going on, and I'm not quite sure why you would want to wade into that. And again, and finally, I was, was hoping that there'd be some sort of independent investigation to some of this, because there are a lot of players here, there are people here who are bosses of other people, and you technically are the bosses of the town council, town manager and the town solicitor. So, you, there's certainly some forces at play here that I would like everyone to take a step back and look at the 30,000-feet picture of really what the process should be and what people deserve. And I think it's, you, while, that, I'm just going to leave it. I feel like it's very disturbing that you are saying that there are credible allegations against another town council member, when you didn't, you have no role in that investigation. You did not do any investigation and you're just putting it out there. I ask if you were at a restaurant, seen having a cocktail, and then someone said, you drunk drove away, you would want a fellow town, town council person to put it out there. Or if you smoke marijuana and somebody thinks, or you're smoking, accuse you of smoking marijuana. I mean, we're going down a slope of trying people in social media that should, we should put the pause on and, and edit and wait 24 hours, because to me, I think it created a lot of unnecessary chaos and, and, you know, you're hurting people's reputations, you're outing survivors. People are wondering who it is. And so, I think in the end, it created a lot of chaos and confusion, and I think appreciate council person, council comments about the role of social media and the role of due process, and we need to move ahead cautiously. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say that I did consult with both the town manager and the town solicitor throughout the process. The reason I brought up the town employees, because the town employee had come forward at that point, and that's when I felt that the situation had gotten serious enough that it needed to be given some type of official form. And that's what I did. As for political shenanigans, I, I fully recognize that, you know, the original Facebook post came from someone who can be seen as an antagonist to Bryant, and maybe Bryant had some role in that himself. I, I cannot speak to what originated this whole situation, but I can speak to the seriousness of it and try to bring it to a fair and transparent resolution. And that was my goal. The witch hunt, or whatever anybody wants to call it, was already proceeding on Facebook when I made my comment. And again, I stand by it. When I say credible, that comes from my own personal investigation to what I saw on Facebook, people posting screenshots, which were obviously not doctored or made up. I don't think we need to go down this line of inquiry now. I will say that we're going to get a report from the town manager from what was an official investigation. We're going to have to decide up here, as a council, what to do with it, because we are the people who have any type of oversight and authority over Bryant. That does not mean we can force him to resign. We would not choose to. That has to be a decision that he makes himself. I would say we have the ability to censure him or to strip him of his vice presidency. Those are the actions that we can take in this matter. And we'll have that discussion at some point in the future, when we have the information necessary to make those decisions.
I'm concerned that you said you, you talked to the town manager and the town solicitor about this before you posted, because it seems to me that in the sexual harassment policy of this town under Section 1353, it, it says on, on Section 3 that, that the town, and you're an employee of the town, because you get paid by the town, that the town will maintain the highest degree of confidentiality possible with respect to such reports, consistent with its obligations to investigate thoroughly all such reports. So, I would like to know if that policy has been violated. I think that's something that we should, we should all be concerned with. And then, to get off, back onto the schools, I just have a question on the, we've been going through the, the debt, how much debt is going to go from the $81 to, to the 320 or whatever the figure is. And there was some talk the other night about, about the 4% cap that Rhode Island has and how, how much of that, that was going to use up. And I guess, before you make your decision to go to, based on submittal of, based on what you're getting now, is, is, I'd like to, I think the town deserves to see what kind of impact that's going to have operationally on the town for the next several years to come. Are we going to be restrained where there's just no money left for increases for our town employees? Where we're not going to have any money left for, I mean, if teachers want a raise, we're going to have to reduce staff to give, to give other teachers a raise? Is that what's going to happen? I mean, is that going to happen to the police department? Are we not going to add, be able to add any town employees, because there's no money left? I mean, we ought to be able to, you, you put a chart together for the debt. You ought to be able to put a chart together for the operational costs, so we can see, really, how much is available as the years go by. Thanks.
I'm Sarah Markie, as you know. I wasn't going to speak, but my name is brought up a couple times in community comment. So, I am going to speak. I know that social media is a difficult tool and that it can be used for good and bad, as I think was referenced in Councilman Calso's statement. I've been on the receiving end of it, right? With lots of questions and arguments and names thrown my way about the ethics statute. And now I have an ethics advisory that is fact, that can guide my process. But there was lots of discussion beforehand about, a lot of interpretation, personal interpretation of the law, right? But the reason I wish to say something right now is, folks can call me names, they can point out that I was the first person to say something about the allegations regarding Councilman DeCruz. But what I, I take real issue with is women coming forward, making allegations, giving proof to the town manager and some council members of said sexual harassment. I take issue with that being called political shenanigans. That is alarming to me. Nobody, none of the women who have said something publicly, who have messaged me after my post, thanking me for saying something when I didn't know them beforehand, none of these women want to be, you know, fodder in community comment at a town council meeting. So, I just say all this, I put this all out there. Like, these are serious allegations. I know some of them. I certainly don't know everything that's been sent to the town manager. I know them, because when I said something, women I've never met came to me in Facebook messages and said, thank you. And frankly, the only regret I have in all of this, in saying something originally to Councilman DeCruz on Facebook and reposting that on my page, the only regret I have is that I didn't say something sooner. Thank you.
You know, allegations at any level are serious business, and they must be investigated, whether it's one-on-one, whether it's not here in the chambers, or anyone employed by the town or involved politically, but they need to be investigated. It's today's world, and it's been the world for many decades, and it, it's something that must be done. My concern is that it wasn't done properly. I would have liked to have seen the council, all five council members, meet with the manager and Mike Rosillo, and maybe even an independent attorney with what news was out there, and an independent investigation was demanded. My concern is, and especially with Mr. Collins, is it really looks like that you were heading up a posse to round up as much information as possible against Mr. DeCruz. And I don't say that lightly, because I take myself back to September 24, 2015, and 15, all the editorials in the newspaper, incredibly critical of you for interfering with the probate courts and the courts, which are on Mike Rosillo, which the editors of the newspapers said you had no right to do. You bullied a family that was so important to South Kingstown's childrens, children, friends, neighbors, and you bullied this man right out of his seat. Mike Rosillo warned you, you cannot do that. The editorials in the newspaper said you cannot do that. You are not God, and you are not judge, and you're not a lawyer. He told you Superior Court handles things like that. Judicial, I think it's judicial tenure and discipline, I've forgotten what it is. But that's where that belonged. Your neighbor prodded you to pursue this. You've had your political signs up on his li, on his land for all the times you run for office. And if he had a problem with a decision by the probate court, or if anybody has a decision, Mike will tell you, there are many avenues for appeal and carry it forward. We all know that. But it was just the bullying that you did. And then, there's another development, something else in town, that unfortunately, and maybe you just made a mistake, but you signed your concerns as president of the South Kingstown Town Council. Now, I've been through this before. You have to do it as a citizen, get in a lot of trouble when you, without council permission, move forward on an issue. So, what I'm seeing here, I'm going to call you Abel, what I'm seeing here is just sometimes, maybe unbridled care and concern, but the problem is, you've taken a position on all these other matters that is, is a deep concern to the community. You don't have a right to do a lot of these acts, and the fact that you, in a way, have repeated what happened back in 2015, which hurt tremendous, wonderful people of our community. Maybe you weren't thinking, but you have to realize that you were part of a team, and this team must make these decisions on this. So, I'm, I'm very concerned about what you've done, and I think that you really have made a terrible mistake here, and this is going to come back to haunt this community and the rest of us. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Schofield. I'm a Wakefield resident, and I'm shocked at the amount of people who are upset about Abel's behavior and not Bryant's. Because I can tell you firsthand, he's out of line, and the way I'm seeing Abel treated tonight is unfortunate.
I don't know, Mike, if you remember the case. I do believe we have the right to change probate judges whenever we want as a council, like they're similar in scope to town managers, town solicitors. I believe it was a vote of, however many of us were on the council. It was, it was a vote of the council, so. Any other community comment?
You know, Abel, excuse me, Jim O'Neill again, to ask that of Mike. Mike had to warn you the right root of this. This has nothing to do, the councils can remove their solicitors at any time, managers. You have that right. We all know that. But what you did wrong here, he had to correct you. What you did wrong was in the editorials of the Independent Irregular Times, of your bullying, what you did to good people of this town. That's what you need to remember.
Sorry, I don't remember anything that you're talking about, Jim.
I'd be happy to argue this for the rest of the evening.
No, you can go and sit down, that's fine.
I've used up my time, thank you. But you really need to consider, maybe you ought to consider resigning. You are the biggest problem here. You basically did things behind people's back. Not the proper way to do things. You're part of a team. You keep forgetting that.
Last time, maybe next January 1st, should you go to the Polar Bunch instead of Facebook?
It does sound more enjoyable. All right.
It's not a joke, Abe. Grow up.
Okay. All right. I think we can move on now. Town managers' report.
All right. So, we're going to start the manager's report tonight with an apology to the folks at home watching on Channel 17. We've got a number of messages indicating that there is no audio on cable. We have run every, every line we've got in the building, we've checked every, every button we've got on our machines. We can't find the problem here, but we will resolve this problem for the, for future meetings. This is not the first time. We've had trouble with sound tonight is particularly bad, and it's a meeting that we know a good number of the public was tuning into. And again, I apologize for the technical difficulties we've had tonight. I will move on from there to a report simply on the state of a report relative to the council president's Facebook post. I have been receiving email complaints from citizens regarding possible sexual harassment activities. Those complaints have been gathered. They're, they're at the point now where I think they are ready for council review, and in the next couple of days, I will be transmitting those on to the full council for your review. I have handled internally, with the advice of I have handled internally, with the advice of the town solicitor, matters relating to town employees. Those will not be forwarded, and the names of the persons, as has been indicated, are protected under our policy. That information will not be conveyed either to the council or to the public. With regard to the complaints that have come in from members of the public, I have been in contact with the women who have submitted those to my office. Most have requested that their names and personally identifiable information be redacted. The council will receive that information without names or information that could identify the individuals who made those complaints. At that point, again, there's nothing based on what we've seen in my office that gives rise to an action that the town government could take. There was nothing that we saw that prompted a referral to the police department. We have informed all of the women who have submitted complaints of their rights. They certainly have, each and every individual who believes that they may have been a victim of a crime, has the right to reach out to the police department. We've advised them of the state agencies that also handle sexual harassment cases. And beyond that, there's nothing that my office or the town government, as town government, has the authority to do at this point. The referral to the town council is for the town council to consider, as it deliberates management and whatever, the management of its membership. You have the right to decide what your rules are gonna be and how to enforce those rules. It's really up to the town council how to deal with its membership. So that information will be provided to the council in the next couple of days.
Yeah, we've heard a couple of requests for an independent investigation. So, you know, once we have that report in our hands, is that something that we could hand off to an independent lawyer or something?
You certainly have the ability to initiate or ask an independent investigator to come in. Based on what I've seen, I wouldn't make that recommendation. I don't think that... I think that these statements and materials submitted, along with the statements, speak for themselves. I don't think there's a lot to be discovered beyond those statements. Quite often, they are stated as the totality of the incident. So I think we've got a complete record, but again, that's for the council to decide. And certainly, getting an independent investigator is something you certainly could do. Moving on very quickly to talk about the item on the agenda related to a resolution to vote to approve or to authorize the manager and superintendent to submit a stage-two application that was put on the agenda tonight so that your right to do so would be preserved. We did not know where we were gonna be on Thursday when we were setting the agenda for this meeting, and I didn't want to leave it off the agenda. However, RGB is not available tonight, and they're not gonna be available at your next meeting. They've asked us to schedule a special meeting for them to come and present to the council on the 29th. So that meeting will be scheduled, and I would imagine the council would like this resolution continued to that date. In terms of some of the questions that have been asked, we're working on a report that will summarize exactly what the implications of the school facilities finances would be, and we'll make sure that that is available to the public before the council meeting where a vote might take place. All right, moving on to the flag report. Really, nothing huge going on. We do have a number of union matters that are sort of percolating. Nothing particularly urgent. It does amount to red simply because we have several of them going on at once. In the building and zoning department, the red flag is for a dumpster issue. We actually have been receiving a number of complaints around town about folks who are using large dumpsters, open dumpsters, as their household waste containers. And it's not necessarily the nicest thing to look at, and in some cases, the summer was not a very nice thing to be smelling in the house on the other side of the fence. We've worked with the town solicitor and have put together a draft ordinance that would restrict the use of open dumpsters other than related to construction. So that will be coming up on a future council agenda, and we, at that point, will explain exactly what the complaints have been and why we think the best solution is to simply limit dumpsters to construction use. Big, bold green flag over in the finance department. The finance department, again, this year, has received its budget award, indicating that professional budget folks who review these things think that the finance department is doing a stellar job. It's nice to know that their assessment is as positive as ours locally is. And really, I guess the only other red flag that I would point to is the tree NOVs. Mike has talked about those already tonight. They are proceeding, they're getting in the right direction. I think we're gonna get to resolution of those in the near future, but they continue to be outstanding problems. And that is the flag report.
Very good. Any questions for the manager? Solicitor's report. All right. That brings us to appointments. I believe there are a bunch of them. You got it all, Joe?
Make a resolution to reappoint William Salerno to the assessment board of review for a term to expire January of 2022.
Do I hear a second?
I think I got that right.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously.
Also, reappointment of John Patrick Shanley, Jr. to the canvassing authority for a six-year term to expire, I'm sorry, March of 2026, 2025.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously.
And then, I think, three or more to the EDC. Jacob Clement, Sarah DiOrio, Daily Vanoot, Susan W. Demarcus, Brian P. Smith, and Henry H. Thayer III for three-year terms to expire March of 2022.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Then appointment of William P. McCusker to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That do it? All right. Congratulations. All right, that brings us to new business. 14A is a resolution establishing a Route 1 stewardship.
We got Bill Wallace.
Yeah, tree warden.
Oh, sorry. 13B.
Make a resolution to appoint William Wallace as a tree warden for the year 2019.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. 14A is a resolution establishing a Route 1 stewardship plan development committee for the purpose of developing a stewardship plan that will help to preserve, protect, and promote the historical, recreational, cultural, and scenic attributes of the Route 1 corridor, and adopting a change for the charge for the committee, as shown on Exhibit 1 attached here, too. It's further described in a memo from the director of planning to the town manager dated December 31, 2018, entitled "Route 1 Stewardship Plan Development Committee."
I'll make a motion to approve 14A.
Second.
Do I hear any discussion on this item? All right, very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. 14B is a resolution authorizing a mutual aid agreement for non-emergency police power with the town of Charleston as follows. Whereas the Rhode Island General Assembly has enacted RIGL 45-42-2, which allows the chiefs of local police departments to enter into reciprocal non-emergency aid agreements with other local police departments which share jurisdictional lines, and whereas any such agreement entered into by a local police department must be approved by the town council by resolution in order to be effective. And whereas the borders of the town of South Kingston with neighboring towns and cities are irregular and disjointed, and in some criminal and traffic cases, charges have been dismissed due to jurisdictional issues. And whereas the establishment of mutual aid agreements with neighboring police departments will result in improved services to the community, clear guidelines of jurisdictional authority, and a better relationship with our neighboring police departments. Whereas mutual aid agreements have been developed for the towns of South Kingston and Charleston and are ready for review by the town council, and whereas this is a matter of importance to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the town of South Kingston, now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the mutual aid agreement between the South Kingston Police Department and the Charleston Police Department in the form approved by the Rhode Island Interlocal Risk Management Trust.
Good evening. Joe Javer, chief of police. I didn't know if anyone would have any questions about these mutual agreements throughout the state required or enabled under a particular statute. We do go to different towns quite frequently, and this makes the situation legal. We've had several situations in the past where the probable cause for arrest may exist in South Kingston, but the car or the vehicle is stopped in Narragansett. Situations like that make this mutual agreement more legal in the eyes of law enforcement and the courts. I don't know if anyone has any questions, particular questions, but we will, you will be seeing these for the neighboring towns of North Kingston, which is already in effect, and Narragansett, URI, and Richmond.
Any questions for chief? All right, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 14B.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to 14E. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to Northeastern Tree Service of Cranston for municipal tree and stump removal services in an amount not to exceed $53,570, including a $5,000 contingency, further described in a memo from the public services director to the town manager, and stated January 8, 2019. Do I hear a motion? Or any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve item 14E as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. 14F is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to electrical installations of New Hampshire for SCADA software upgrades to three computers provided by the town and all associated programming, labor, and testing in an amount not to exceed $26,850, including a $2,000 contingency, further detailed in a memo from the public services director to the town manager, entitled "Regional Waste Water Treatment Fund SCADA System Upgrade." Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 14F.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. 14G is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Narragansett Dockworks of Narragansett for steel repair services to the Silver Lake Avenue Bridge for an amount not to exceed $197,644, including a $50,000 contingency, further described in a memo from the public services director to the town manager dated January 8.
I'll make a motion that we approve item 14G.
Any discussion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yay.
We want that bridge fixed. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. 14H is a resolution amending the fee for disposal of non-recyclable mattresses and box springs at the Rose Hill Transfer Station from $60 each to $80 each, and amending the town's schedule of fees as further described in a memo from the public services director to the town manager dated January 8, 2019. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 14H.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Were these made recyclable at some point? Which ones are non-recyclable, I suppose is my question.
So residents are able to bring them free if they are recyclable. What makes them non-recyclable is if they're damaged, soiled, or wet, beyond the ability for them to recycle them. And then at that point, they get tipped at Central Landfill.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Item I is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Howard Johnson of Peastale for the purchase of two front mount mowers in accordance with all bid specifications in an amount not to exceed $45,000, including a trade allowance of $6,000, further described in a memo from the director of leisure services to the town manager dated January 9.
Good evening. These are two mowers that have been budgeted in the capital budget for replacement. One is to replace a 2007, and the other to replace a 2008 mower. Howard Johnson's is a longtime vendor that'll low bidder, recommend approval.
Motion to approve 14A.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. 14J. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to ABI Attachments of Indiana for the purchase of one utility sand broomer with edger and laser grater in accordance with all bid specifications in an amount not to exceed $28,343, further described in a memo from the director of leisure services to the town manager dated January 9.
This was part of the same bid. It's a different vendor, and just, I'd like to bring to your attention that it is two different capital budget allocations that were meant to replace two different sand broomers. Instead, we're recommending this one machine that will be a grater, more efficient, and we will retain the other sand broomer.
Motion to approve 14J.
Second.
Very good. So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Item L. A resolution authorizing the town manager and school superintendent to submit a stage-two application for state housing aid to the Rhode Island Department of Education for a facility construction project as outlined in a proposal presented by Robinson Green Beretta to the town council and school committee during a concurrent meeting held January 10.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this until a special meeting on January 29.
Second.
So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. At this point, we're gonna have to move to closed executive session, so...
Make a motion to move to closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A5 to discuss matters related to the acquisition or lease of real property for public purposes or for the disposition of publicly-held property. Wherein advanced public information would be detrimental to the interest of the public pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A2 to discuss matters pertaining to litigation relative to Cochee versus Town of South Kingston.
Do it all that. Second. So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Do it all that with a cough drop.